We got cold, I thought he'd be like, you're asleep.
Ready to go over there.
You're supposed to get my beer, I'm canceled tonight.
What about me?
Me too. Right there on the. Oh, me too.
Oh, it's all the time.
Yeah, he right over there.
So then.
Your package is downstairs. She said, yeah, she brought your package.
Which was home citation is for.
Yeah, they brought your package.
Allow under age.
The only thing that we don't have. They're waiting checks.
We have the checks, we have the general hotel accommodations.
Yeah, but they have, they brought your package.
All together, it's counting, counting them for you.
Oh, so the packets are ready.
Sure, I know, yes.
If you count them. So you have.
I would say we're at four.
Oh, thank you.
Potentially four. Oh, do what I mean. If you're counting underage. Yeah, but you know, you just received package, you're two of them.
He's downtown.
But even as one.
Ms. Jones.
Is that all we did this?
We're wrong.
So travel package.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the Savannah City Council has convened in a special meeting for a show cause hearing for the revocation of the alcohol license of Regenda, Regendra Patel of Octane Bar and Lounge located at 35 Whittaker Street in Automatic District Two. This hearing was originally scheduled for September the 12th and was postponed and then also postponed on October the 10th at the petitioner's request. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a little bit different than our usual convenings. In this case, the city council serves as a trier of fact in this quasi judicial proceeding. We will hear evidence and we will allow council representing the city first and then from the petitioner to be able to present their cases. They have the ability to call witnesses, examine those witnesses, and then provide cross examination of those witnesses. At the conclusion of both parties having the opportunity to present their case, the council will have to deliberate in public and then come to a decision. And our decision is binding. So as the judge in this case, I do have our city attorney making sure that I, I stay on the straight and narrow. So the judge is being judged by our city attorney. So that being said, this hearing is now convened and we will start with the Assistant City Attorney, I believe.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Denise Cooper, Assistant City Attorney, and we are here regarding a show cause hearing as indicated by the mayor. We have three witnesses that would need to be sworn in at this time.
Okay.
Y'all can stand.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you, you've been sworn.
The business located at 35 West, 35 Whittaker Street, Octane Lounge is before you today and I will call up Ms. Judy Jones first as our first witness.
Please, when you come up, speak into the microphone and please state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Judy Jones, Revenue Director.
All right, Ms. Jones, if you would, you have a very soft voice. If you would just angle the mic a little bit closer to your mouth.
Turn it up.
Point it up, point it up.
Turn it up.
Point it up, yeah, there you go, there you go, thank you.
Ms. Jones, would you please advise the court, the court, the council of your involvement with regards to the business located at 35 Whittaker Street?
Mr. Retender Patel, the owner of Psy Octane located at 35 Whittaker Street, was approved for an alcohol license, so the alcohol application was submitted. He was approved on February the 28th of 2019 to dispense liquor, beer, and wine by the drink as a bar and lounge.
And has this been an ongoing license with regards to this particular business?
Yes, it has.
Okay, and once you received information regarding this particular license suspension, which was executed on August 30th, did you have any contact with the business owner regarding his next steps with regards to licensing?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and what did you advise him at that time regarding his license?
I advised Mr. Patel that the license would be suspended due to the allegations of the incident that had happened at his location and for him to surrender the license to me until we go before council.
And would Mr. Patel have the ability to have surrendered his license?
Yes, he did.
Okay, would you please advise council, if he had done that, what would be the ramifications?
He would have, if he would have surrendered his license, he would have had a one year waiting period.
Okay, and then he would be able to reapply?
Yes.
Okay. And did you have any other involvement with Mr. Patel regarding his license since the immediate suspension by this city manager?
No, I have not.
Opposing counsel may have a few questions for you.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jones. My name is Dom and Julius. I'm here representing Mr. Patel as well as Octane Bar and Lounge. Just have a few questions. Now, I understand that Mr. Patel was asked to receive, to surrender his license on August 30th of this year, but I want to talk a little bit about how we got there beforehand. You mentioned that he received his license in 2019, is that right?
That is correct.
Now, I'm also aware of some citations that were received back in June of this year, is that right?
I will not be able to answer to that, that citation was not issued by me.
Okay, I guess my question is, since that time, I'm aware of one meeting where you had to sit down with him and discuss what's known as a security plan, is that right?
I was in attendance in the meeting, the administrative hearing that was held with Mr. Patel along with the ABC unit.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Jones, I have no further questions.
You're welcome.
I would now like to call Sergeant Scott Richards. Please state your full name for the record and department.
Scott Richards, I'm with the Alcohol Unit for the City of Savannah Police Department.
All right, you're going to have to speak up a little bit for us, okay?
All right.
All right.
Scott Richards for the City of Savannah Police Department, I'm with the Alcohol Unit.
Okay, and you are aware of the immediate suspension of the alcohol license for Octane Bar and Lounge on August 30th, correct?
Yes.
Had you had any previous involvement with this business?
I have.
Okay, please advise council what your involvement has been with regards to this particular business?
The ABC unit received several complaints on June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd.
Of what year?
Of 2024 in relations to underage drinking, drug use, and sexual relations with the staff at Octane Bar, 35 Whittaker Street.
Okay, continue.
That investigation began, and to verify these complaints, we conducted an underage buy on June 9th at 35 Whittaker Street where a CI was allowed to enter, purchase alcohol, and was not carded.
Just, could you just clarify the purpose of council, could you just, CI?
What does CI stand for?
Criminal informant.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Confidential informant.
Thank you.
Continue.
Through that, three citations were issued. One citation was issued to the doorman. Given the Class C alcohol license Mr. Patel has at 35 Whittaker Street, minors are not permitted. The second one was issued to the bartender for furnishing alcohol to a person under the age of 21. The third citation was issued to Mr. Patel. The bouncer or doorman on that night was under 21 years of age, and that is against the ordinance as well, they have to be 21 or older.
Did you have any?
I'm sorry?
Did you have any other citations or any involvement with this business?
As that was validated that the complaint to be true, I continued the investigation where through the complaint, several photos were given to me and I was able to identify subjects from them photos and only one was able to talk to me or willing to talk to me. I spoke to a female who was in a photo where she said she had first entered in March of 2024, Octane Lounge, by a gentleman who was a boss there, they called Joey or Joseph Reed. She named several other employees there that would let her in, knowing she was only 20 years of age. She admitted to sexual relations with some of the employees. In all fairness, she did say the sexual relations was not to get in the bar. It was just an agreed upon thing. Consentually, yes, ma'am. I showed her the photo that I had received about her that was in the bar and she said that that was her, that was her drink in there, and that photo was taken on May 2nd of 2024. So through that, Mr. Patel, who's the responsible party on the license, he was cited for an unlawful presence of a person under 21 in the bar and furnishing alcohol to a person under 21. Following those, the shooting in reference to August 24th, the female victim from the shooting, she was under the age of 21 as well, being that of 18. He was cited for that. Unlawful presence of a person under 21 in the establishment and the same held true for the shooting on August 30th. The other person involved in that incident, the female there, she was under 21 as well. Mr. Patel was cited again for a person under 21 in the establishment. In addition to, with the totality of those circumstances, he was cited for not following his security plan because everybody's supposed to be checked for weapons and you could clearly see people entering, and I reviewed this footage with Mr. Patel at some points, where people had entered his establishment that were not padded down, they were not wandered with a metal detector, they were, they would just kind of come and go. Some would come out, some would come back in, and there was no, they were not following the security plan. So he was cited for that as well.
Are all those pending or any of them been resolved at this time?
The citation for the doorman from the underage buy on July, on June 9th, that was taken care of as far as a guilty fine. The bartender who furnished the alcohol, that was dismissed due to the officer not working for Savannah PD anymore. And I believe the, Mr. Patel receiving the citation for the bouncer being under 21, I believe that's still pending as well. As far as that, the other cases are pending currently with the court.
And in this, in the correspondence that was sent to Mr. Patel for the immediate suspension, it's referencing the alcohol business ordinance, beverage ordinance, Section 61207, which addresses the license and that council may consider denying, suspending, revoking, or refusing to renew an alcohol license one or more for the following reasons. Operation of the licensee's business in such a manner to constitute a threat of public safety, welfare, or health, or in any such manner as to constitute a public nuisance or the operation of a licensed business where violation of federal, state of laws frequently or regularly occur. Would you consider the violations that you just addressed to be in alignment with one of a business that would need to have a license that would be revoked?
I would.
Have no further questions.
Thank you, counsel.
Officer Richards, I want to thank you for being here. I have a few questions myself. Just a moment ago, when you were being questioned by Ms. Cooper, you talked a lot about, a lot of different citations, and I just want to keep things a little clear as to why we're here. First and foremost, the show cause hearing that we received on August 30th, it talks about a recent incident regarding a tragic and unfortunate shooting that happened on August 30th of 2024. Now, on August 30th, the citations for, all the citations that you talked about were related to underage drinking after August 30th?
Underage drinking after August 30th?
Yes, sir.
August 30th was the last citation, so there was no citations after August 30th, unless I'm misunderstanding you.
Yeah, let me clarify, so the citation was for events that happened on August 30th. And I just want to clarify about what those events were. Now, that, that citation itself was issued to Mr. Patel sometime after August 30th, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now that we're talking about the same citations, I just want to talk about what they're actually for. These things, these citations for August 30th are related to, one for underage drinking?
The one citation for Mr. Patel in reference to the shooting on the 30th is for not following his safety plan and the other one's for an unlawful presence of a person under 21 in the establishment. It's not for underage drinking, but given his license, he cannot have somebody under 21 in the establishment.
Thank you for clarifying, so we can agree that those two citations are, one for not following the security plan, like you mentioned, and the second was for the, the presence of someone under 21 years old in the establishment, correct?
Correct.
Just to keep things clear, the show cause hearing obviously, obviously references the shooting, the, the, Mr. Tristan Magnigold, he's not under 21, is he?
I'm sorry, say that name again?
I'm saying that the victim of the gunshot, the shooting, he's not under 21.
That's a pending investigation, I don't have those answers.
You don't know that he, his date of birth, that he's 37 years old?
I don't have the victim of the shooting, you're telling me there was another person associated with that shooting that went in Psy Octane that night? And that's what the citation for is, the presence of under 21 for the female that was in there.
Okay, and I, I understand that it's a pending investigation, but I just, to keep very clear to my question, Mr. Magnigold, as far as you know, he's over the age of 21, correct?
I do not know.
Okay, so the citation, but the citation you issued wasn't for him?
Correct.
Okay, it was for, you said someone else who was in the bar that night that was under the age of 21?
Correct.
Okay. Officer Richards, did you, you were the one, you, in your investigation, did you review video footage from August 30th?
I did.
Okay. When reviewing this video footage, did you see any sort of altercation taking place inside of the Octane Bar?
Inside the bar, no, the video footage I reviewed was to verify the female in question was in fact the one underage for the citation that I verified with the lead detective.
And you're also aware of the shooting that occurred that night, correct?
Vaguely.
When, the shooting that occurred that night, as far as you said you vaguely are aware of it, from your, from your knowledge, are you aware that it's something that happened inside of the bar?
I do not believe it happened inside the bar, but as far as details and facts, I don't have those.
Okay. All right, so let's pivot a little bit. You talked a lot about the ordinance sections related to the show cause hearing. You talked about 6-1207, which relates to determinations, things that the council can consider. But I also want to talk about 61221, which relates to penalties. Are you aware of this, this section?
I'm familiar with it a little bit, yes, but I don't make the determinations on the penalties.
Okay. It states that for a first offense, there's a minimum fine of $500. Second offense, within 12 months of the first, 750. Third offense, within 18 months, a fine of $1,000. And then it says, any offense after the third, if within 24 months of the first, issuance of notice to appear for, to show cause why license should not be revoked. Did what I read, does your knowledge of this section contradict with what I read? In any way, shape, or form? Does that sound right to you, is what I'm asking?
I guess I'm not tracking on that one, can you repeat that?
Okay, basically, it lists out a minimum, a certain number of minimum fines for each offense. A first offense, a minimum fine of $500. Second offense, a minimum fine of $750. Third offense, a minimum fine of $1,000. And after the fourth offense in 24 months, there's an issue of notice to appear to show cause why license should not be revoked.
Okay.
I'm asking, you know, are you familiar with this section in any way, shape, or form?
I am familiar with it, I've read that, yes.
Okay. You mentioned that there were some citations issued prior to August 30th of this year. When were those citations issued? To save time, I think you said that they were related to all in June. All these citations for the bouncer, et cetera, everything prior to August 30th was given in June, correct, of this year?
Give me a second to verify that, that sounds correct. Yes, the citations issued prior to the shootings were in June.
Okay, this business has been open since 2019 and you're not aware of any citations issued prior to June of this year for any issues at all at the bar, correct?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you, Officer Richards, I have no further questions.
Okay, we can switch. No further questions.
Thank you. Ms. Cooper.
Sergeant Banks, please state your full name and department for the record.
I'm Sergeant Pernicia Banks with Savannah Police Department, ABC Unit.
Okay. And are you familiar with this business located at 35 Whittaker Street?
I am.
In Psy Octane? And what has been your involvement with regards to this business?
My involvement is because I'm the supervisor for the ABC Unit. Like Officer Richards stated, we received several allegations and complaints in reference to Psy Octane. Because we received those complaints, they had to be investigated. We conducted a compliance check in undercover underage operation in reference to those in the first week of June or into the second week of June.
In what year?
Of 2024.
Okay, continue.
During the investigation, we were able to determine that underage drinking and underage presence was occurring at the location. And we had a meeting with Mr. Patel.
Before we jump into 2024, have there been calls to service to this business?
Prior to 2024, there had been calls for service at that location.
And would you advise counsel what those calls to service have been?
Different calls for service have been at that location. About 30 different significant calls for service to that location that ranged from assaults, fights, firearms, drugs, theft of property, disorderly conduct, injured persons.
And would you be able to pull a full record of what all those are specifically? Would you be able to pull those if we needed to pull the full record?
Yes, there, there are reports for those incidents to include, I'm sorry, aggressive behavior from the employees that are hired to perform security services there.
And based upon any of those calls to service or the citations that you're referencing, have administrative hearings been conducted with Mr. Patel regarding this establishment?
Yes.
And have you participated in those administrative hearings?
Yes.
Or administrative meetings? How many have been conducted with Mr. Patel?
Since I've been a part of the unit, which I became supervisor in the unit April of 2024, I've done two administrative hearings with, or administrative meetings with him from June to present.
Okay. And what was the first one regarding?
The first one was regarding the citations that were given and the concerns that we had for the underage operation and the presence of minors at the location as well as the citations that were given to the employees for security being underage to perform his duties and the security not performing the duties in reference to the security plan that was submitted to the ABC Unit.
And so based upon that first administrative hearing, were there any instructions given or things that he was supposed to do leaving out of that meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Please advise counsel.
Okay, so after we had the first administrative meeting, that would have been in June. We made Mr. Patel aware that the management that he had was problematic, that the employees were problematic. Of course, that the underage drinking had occurred, the presence of underage minors were occurring at the establishment. We went over the security plan to let him know what the duties of his security team should be, by that being handling crowd control, which is a very problematic issue at Whittaker and Congress Street and how the crowd is not controlled by his employees. We also spoke of him making remedies to management. We asked him to maybe take in, take in consideration that he would monitor his cameras on his own so that he could see some of the practices that were going on there. One, or when he wasn't present at the location so that he could see whether or not his employees were following their duties. And he took all these suggestions into consideration and said that he would make changes to also include off-duty officers from SPD being hired to work off-duty there instead of the officer that he had working there that was from Still, I want to say Stillmore, Georgia, that was out of this jurisdiction and had no, like, authority in our area.
Okay.
And he said he would.
Okay. And so after that meeting, even outlining all those conditions that he needed to take steps towards making sure that he was in compliance with our ordinance, you still ended up with another administrative hearing, correct?
That's correct.
And what did that administrative, what led to that administrative hearing?
That administrative meeting happened after the, the shootings occurred in the downtown area.
And are you referencing the shootings, the last shooting on August 3rd?
No.
I mean, August 30th?
August the 24th, I believe, and the 30th.
Okay, all right. Continue.
Because during the investigation, the business name had come up several times. We became involved to basically verify what parts of that investigation were going to involve ABC. And during that investigation, we learned that the victims in both incidents, or one of the victims in both incidents were underage and had been present at the location. So we cited for the underage presence at the location.
Are, are there any other violations? Well, after, so after that, second administrative hearing, this is why we're here now, really, at the show calls, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then we, as Sergeant Richards indicated, there are some pending court cases with regards to some of the citations that you referenced, correct?
That's correct.
And just to reference the, the section in our ordinance 61207 with regards to public safety, welfare, and health of our community, do you consider this a business that would fall in that category of a potential public nuisance?
I do.
No further questions.
Sergeant Banks, I just have a few questions. You referenced that a lot of different police reports a moment ago when you were being questioned by Ms. Cooper. You said there were about 30 different reports. Did I get that correct?
For significant events, yes.
For significant events?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
What do you consider to be a significant event?
Violence, injury, shootings, large fights, assault, aggressive behavior from the staff.
And did you compile, I guess, in preparation for this hearing, did you compile all these reports together?
I did.
Do you have a copy of that document?
I constructed a case file.
Okay. I guess prior to today's hearing, do you remember sitting down, I guess, and compiling a memo that had, or documentation basically talking about all these different CRNs or reports that were out for the establishment, of which there were 29?
I'm sorry. Can you, you said, do I remember saying that there were 29?
I'm asking, do you remember putting together a document that had all of the reports prior to today's hearing? Do you remember putting together a document with all of the reports listed out that pertained to today's show calls hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have that document with you?
Yes.
Okay. I want to talk about that document. You mentioned there were 30 significant events that happened at Octane, correct?
27 to 30.
Okay. Looking at this document, I see that you talk about incidents with underage. You talk about significant events, but you also list a lot of less significant incidents, correct?
Correct.
These include, and I think the very first one states, this incident had nothing to do with the establishment, correct?
That's correct.
This included, basically, a police report filed about a temporary security guard confiscating drugs. This is a significant event. Under the section for significant event, the third one basically talks about how security at Octane confiscated drugs and turned it in, correct?
Correct.
The first significant event you have listed under the heading significant event talks about a phone being stolen, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when we talk about underage incidents, you list only four reports, right, under that section?
That's correct.
Okay. Two of them were citations that were addressed at the administrative hearing in June of this year?
Correct.
Okay. And the other two are for what we're here to talk about today, right? This, what happened on August 24th and August 30th, the allegations of underage individuals in the establishment, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So those are all of the underage drinking, underage incidents that you included in your report?
Those are the four that I included.
And because we talked about a section that has less significant events, like phone being stolen and things of that nature, or things that didn't involve the establishment, not all 29 of these incident reports pertain to significant events like you were talking about earlier, like assault and things of that nature at the bar, correct?
I have a, I can give you a breakdown.
I guess, Ms. Banks, you compiled this prior to today's hearing and presented it for Mr. Patel in regards to all of the evidence that you had about incidents at Octane Bar, correct?
Can you repeat that?
Prior to today's hearing, you compiled all of the evidence, all of the different reports that you had, and you put it together in this document, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when we're talking about this document, it has 29 different incidents listed. Is that right? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And only four of them relate to underage drinking?
Correct.
Additionally, several of these events are, as you put it, less significant events.
When, I guess, are you trying to get me to explain less significant? I'm not really tracking right there.
I'm just asking if that's simply what you put down. You said today that there were 30 significant events, and I'm just asking whether or not things like phone being stolen and the things that are included here, the section that you have that has 11 different things posted out as things that have nothing to do with the establishment, I'm asking, I'm really just trying to clarify whether or not what you include in your report, all of these events are actually things like assault or significant events at the bar, or if there's a lot of other things included in here that you consider to be less significant?
The reports that I investigated, the 30 reports that are attached to this document, are incidents that, when you say less significant, they're significant in total, but not as serious as the, the events that happened on the 30th of August and the 24th of August. These are all incidents that we would take into consideration as something problematic to a business serving alcohol.
And I guess problematic to the business, to you, would include this incident, which you also put says this incident has nothing to do with the establishment, correct?
So if you look at the document that I constructed, the reason why that, that incident is there and it said that it had nothing to do with the establishment is because the employee left the establishment that they were at and went to another establishment to make a phone call for police. So that address was listed as such, based off the call.
Okay, Ms. Banks, I want to shift our focus and talk about the citations as to why we're here today. These are the two underage incidents that you include in your report for the 24th and the 30th, right?
For the 24th of August and the 30th of August, correct?
Okay. On August 24th, are you aware how the underage individual got into the establishment?
How the person got into the club?
Yes, ma'am.
Utilizing the door that you would have to go through to get through security is the only way I can determine that they got in, inside the club.
Yes, ma'am. And I understand that they were inside the, the establishment. My question is, is, did they present ID?
Based off the video that I watched, I can't determine whether or not ID was presented or not. I didn't, that was not what I was looking for at the time.
And would you say the same thing for August 30th?
August 30th, presenting ID was, was not what I was looking for at the time of looking at that video either. We looked at a lot of video, multiple hours, and I can't, I was trying to determine that the person was inside the club and the fact that we knew that the person was under the age of 21 based off of the investigation that was being conducted.
Thank you, Officer Banks. I have no further questions.
You're welcome.
I have a few follow-up questions.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sergeant Banks, with regards to the memo that Attorney Julius is referencing that you outlined, is that memo outlined with headers of what incidences may be considered? Firearms, underage, aggressive behavior, significant events, less significant incidences? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in this outline that we provided to counsel, there are four incidences of aggressive behavior, correct?
There are.
And you've identified those when you outlined the citations previously, correct?
That is correct.
So while there may be a section with lesser incidents, less significant incidents, that's just showing the totality of circumstances that have occurred with calls to service to this business, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what this entire memo was about? All the calls of service to this business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So when breaking down, just only talking about lesser significant incidences, that, that wouldn't encompass all the severity and the seriousness with gun violence that's transpired with regards to this business, correct?
Correct.
Okay. No further questions.
Sergeant Banks, I just have a few follow-up questions. You were asked about the section titled aggressive behavior, in which you mentioned that there were four incidents. Were any arrests made in those incidents?
Just a second.
I'll give you an opportunity to answer.
I believe the answer is no.
Okay. And some of these stem all the way to 2022?
The first, correct.
The second one's from 2023?
That's correct.
My next question is, for any of these incidents, did you sit down and talk with Mr. Patel?
These incidents were all prior to my, to my assignment. But once I became the sergeant for that unit, I have spoken with Mr. Patel in reference to his aggressive bouncers.
And so you're not aware of anyone addressing these items listed in this report with Mr. Patel prior to June of this year?
I can't speak on that.
I'm asking, to your knowledge, you're not aware of anyone addressing any of these problems with Mr. Patel prior to June of this year?
Not to my knowledge.
Thank you, Officer Banks.
I have no further questions.
All right, thank you.
That's all of our witnesses.
Okay, thank you. You're okay, sir.
Mayor and city councilman, my name is Donovan Julius. I'm here representing Mr. Rajan Patel and Octane Bar and Lounge for the show calls hearing today. I think I'd be remiss if the first thing I didn't address was just express our sincere condolences for the loss of life, loss of life that occurred on August 30th of 2024. It's absolutely tragic. It's sad. I know from conversations with my clients, as well. But I think, I think it's important to parse out and keep clear that that's not necessarily the reason why we're here. that that's not necessarily the reason why we're here today. We received the show cause hearing, notice of the show cause hearing on August 30th. Sometime afterward is when we received the citations that we're here talking about today, related to the presence of underage individuals in the bar. I think there's, but I do want to be very, very clear that what you didn't hear today is any sort of evidence of violence that occurred inside of Octane Bar. You didn't hear any evidence of, you know, people being over served at Octane Bar, anything necessary to happen inside of Octane's bar premises or its control. But a week later, we receive these citations after he turned over, wanting to help with the investigation, he turned over his video evidence so that way they can look through it, parse through it, and figure out exactly what happened. And it's only a week later after that that he received these citations now, September 6th, after they reviewed that footage saying, hey, we don't know how, but these persons, we believe them to be underage inside of your establishment. Now, that is a very serious problem, and I don't mean to downplay that, but I think it was important to keep clear about why we're here. And I think there's just two key, I guess, tenets, thematic tenets that I think are important here, is that, first and foremost, you can only directly address issues that you're aware of. The first time that Mr. Patel has owned this bar since 2019. Up until June of this year, he would have told you that he runs a successful business, that it's a safe business, things that matter importantly to him. Because June is the very first time he ever received any sort of citation, had any conversation, or any indication that there was anything wrong with security or anything like that at his bar. And so what happened? He received three citations. He went. He sat in front of the judge. One was thrown out, and the other two were treated as one offense, and he pleaded guilty, and he paid his fine. He sat down with ABC. They talked through, you know, how this happened, added security measures so they can beef up their security, which included, one, something that wasn't there before was the presence of off-duty officers. Two, that he needed to be a little more involved in monitoring the cameras. Three, that no alcohol should be consumed by employees, something that he wasn't aware that was happening. Four, that there needed to be some sort of stricter standards as far as the bouncers and employees that he was hiring, which he understood. And lastly, he needed to use an ID scanner. Afterward, he talked with his personnel. He talked about, you know, what had happened, the fact that they learned that, hey, you know, this cracks in our security, underage people are getting in. And he thought everything was okay until, obviously, he received these citations. When he was asked to turn over the video related to the shooting, that's when he finds out that, hey, you know, we believe there's underage people in the bar. I think it's important to know what the... I think the second thing that's important, aside from the fact that you can only address the things that you're aware of, is that you're going to need somebody that's committed to solving these problems in order to fix it. We know that he sat and spoke with ABC the first time it was raised to him in June of this year, and they talked about everything that needed to be in place, including the presence of off-duty officers. And we know that August 24th and August 30th, what we did have was, on August 24th, there were presents, there were security. People were being wanted and checked for security. They had the ID scanners. And they had the presence of Savannah police officers through a program in which they can hire them to come and to work. August 30th, they tried to have the same measures in place. The only thing that's different that Officer Banks mentioned was that instead of having Savannah police officers, because, you know, they basically, they post these shifts, and they can choose to accept them or not. And if they don't come, then they don't come. But the presence of police is so important downtown because it's largely a very, a big deterrent for violence and things of that nature that you'd have inside of an establishment like Octane. So what they did is, instead of just saying, hey, no police officer showed up, they went and got another officer, police officer, Officer Baxter, to go and stand at the door. And I will submit to you that Officer Baxter was one of the first people there to render aid to the victims on August 30th, hired by Octane. Now, he understands that there's obviously an issue of underage persons getting into the bar. I don't think it's a problem that's unique to Octane Bar. I don't think it's a problem that's unique even to bars in Savannah. I myself, you know, I'm a Georgia Bulldog. I came from Athens. I know very well that underage drinking, people getting in with technology and things of that nature, it's a really big problem. I think another problem that they identified today too that's really big is personnel. You can have all the right devices. You can have ID scanners. You can have people scanning. But if the people using them are not doing what they're supposed to do, then that's a problem. But again, you can only address that once you know about it. And so what I submit to you today is that Mr. Patel is someone that genuinely cares about safety of people inside of his establishment. He's a small business owner. He's a father. And it matters to him a lot. And I know that actions taken since this time, he realized that, hey, you know, we had a conversation after June, but there's real problems here. I know they talked about one specific manager that was problematic in the communications he had with ABC and officers. But for him, that wasn't enough because it just was, to him, even if it's one person, there's other people in management. And so it just shows the entire system that's complicit. And so as of, not even as of today, since this incident, since he learned about, you know, all of these things that we talked about today, they've been fired. And so Mr. Patel is here, willing to work with the city, willing to work with the police, as he has been. And I think as part of those conversations, and I think it's certainly relevant to the council's consideration today, is we talked about certain proposal terms that would help to alleviate the situation moving forward. I'm not sure what I pressed up here.
You're fine.
Okay. Now, I want to be very clear. There was one term that we couldn't really come to agree on specifically, was it just about what date they could reopen? But what we talked about was a suspension until January 1st of 2024. We talked about a six-month probationary period. We talked about that problematic manager or bartender saying that there needs to be some sort of culture shift where we really care about underage drinking and the safety and that, you know, he may need to be fired. As we kind of already said, he's been fired, and so has everyone else in management. During this timeframe, this probationary period, they talked about adjusted business hours of 1:00 a.m. on weekdays, midnight on weekends. We talked about no alcohol consumption by the staff. And I think some of that was really important because it's not just a matter of fact of, oh, well, it's, being aware of a problem also is, takes you kind of being present and looking out for it. And so another thing that was talked about was the presence of the business owner being a deterrent to make sure that that culture is safe and that they're taking these security measures very seriously. And so that was another component of this, was Mr. Patel being there on a more consistent basis. Another thing we talked about was administrative hearings and basically meetings checking in on a monthly basis during this period to make sure that they're keeping up with security, that there have been no other infractions. And then lastly, a final meeting to just make sure that after these six months that there hasn't been any additional security concerns. And so that's all we have. We just wanted to submit that for the council's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. That being said, we've heard the evidence. This is an opportunity for counsel to ask any questions. I will start, just a couple. And then after that, we'll ask the city attorney to remind us about what our options are as it relates to this matter. The first thing I want to point out is that Jay Melder is the city manager for the city of Savannah. And I believe that our, the charter allows him the opportunity to be able to suspend a license of an alcohol establishment if he feels, in his professional opinion, that that need exists to be able to do that. So I just want to make sure. I think he has that right, and I want to make sure that we're really clear about, that he could do that even without going through the progressive steps. The next question I had was, that really stuck with me. You said that, counsel, that the officer, you had an officer from Stillmore, Georgia, that served as law enforcement in an establishment in Savannah where clearly he had no jurisdiction and clearly could have created even more legal issues for him, for the business owner, because he had no jurisdiction, but yet is portraying himself as a duly certified law enforcement officer in Savannah. And I wanted to know, we have several law enforcement agencies here to include Savannah Police, but we also have the county police who have jurisdiction, the sheriff's department. I want to know about your due diligence and being able to seek local law enforcement that actually have arrest powers in this city.
Absolutely. That's a great question. So the application or the program that they use in order to get these police officers to come and to be able to pick up these off-duty shifts is called Roll Call. It's a service that Mr. Patel pays for after his, the meeting in June. And basically, officers will come and they'll pick up shifts. And so that's why on August 24th, we did have police officers there. But the problem runs in last minute, the day of. If you've posted these shifts and officers are unable to make it to show, then that leaves a vacuum and where you leave business owners like Mr. Patel asking, well, what do I do? And so for him, as an officer, they knew. And I understand that you're saying there's jurisdictional issues, but his presence in and of itself is a large deterrent, one, but more so kind of just acting as a bouncer and kind of being there.
But law enforcement is not supposed to be a bouncer, number one. And I think, number two, if there was an issue in which he has to intervene as a law enforcement officer, the liability that's created for him acting where he does not have legal authority creates a situation that puts your client in severe issue. What if, if there was an incident where he had to pull a weapon or use force in progression? And I guess I'm concerned about that because we have so many law enforcement agencies here that could have been utilized. I just can't see and never heard of us using out-of-town law enforcement, except for mutual aid, for parades, and those types of things. Georgia State Patrol, Georgia Department of Public Safety provide services here. They have jurisdiction. They can act in the capacity of a law enforcement officer.
Yes, and I think he absolutely understands some of those dangers now. I think he was just put in a position where less than 12 hours' notice, he has to open. And I think he tried to make a decision that he thought was best. But I think he understands now that all the problems with that.
Okay. Second question deals with the context of a relevant period. I've heard 2022, I've heard 2024. For the purposes of what we're talking about now, what is counsel considering in terms of the violations or infractions? What is the time period we're talking about? Because I think at some point, you have to kind of narrow the scope.
So it would start at the, I want to make sure I'm correct, the 2022 incidences. We had to include all of the calls of service of 2019. 2024, the two shootings were the trigger for the city manager to invoke his authority to suspend the license. But the actual period of time would be from the 2022 to the 2024.
And based on your understanding of the case, although I understand that there is an investigation going on, is there any belief that the business itself played a material role in the death of Mr. Manigault?
No, the incidences did occur outside of the business. It's just that the individuals, some of the individuals that were a part of the shootings or the incident were underage that came out of this particular business. But it did not happen.
They were involved in the shooting incident?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Questions for counsel?
If I may?
Yes.
I just want to, I know there was a, basically saying, when you say "involved in the shooting," it's very vague. My understanding is there's no evidence that, like, this was the shooter or anybody else. I think this was someone who just happened to be, when it happened outside of Octane, happened to be in the area or premises.
That's why my question was a material role in his, because that's been used, but the reality is I'm asking. And I think counsel said no. Any questions?
Yes, sir, I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I have questions as well.
All the women?
All right, thank you, sir. I just have a few questions. And what is your name, sir?
Donovan Julius.
Mr. Julius?
Yes, ma'am.
I think you mentioned that, you stated that Mr. Patel cares about safety and is generally concerned about what goes on in our community and in his bar. So just one question. Did you contact the grieving family?
No, I have not. Because I don't even know their, I don't know if he was with the girlfriend. I don't, absolutely not. Because I don't have their, if she was married or girlfriend.
I think he's just trying to say that he didn't think it was appropriate. He hasn't. He doesn't have any information that has to contact him. But, I mean, that has no bearing on his actual remorse or, you know, sorrow that this incident even occurred. I think he just came here to be clear that it had nothing to do with the bar.
Well, I disagree. And I wanted to know, is there, after you put things in place, your security measures, was there a new community agreement that took place? Did anybody answer that question?
We're not sure, but more than likely, no, because we would have provided that.
I didn't hear you, ma'am.
More than likely not. We can check on it, but we would have provided that in the information if it had.
Okay. And so just to answer Mr. Julius's question, that is awesome that you have not had any previous problems, and that's commendable. But why we're here today is a problem that occurred on that date. And so August the 30th, it happened, right? And so through our due diligence, on September the 6th, we were able to cite you three times, one that you said was dropped by the court, and two that were merged together. Is that correct? The charges?
No, I think those, all three of those are still pending. They haven't been addressed by the court yet. We're talking about previous citations that led to them having their very first conversation in June of this year.
Okay. I misunderstood you. I thought you said that there were three citations and one had already been dropped. Okay, with that being said, in law enforcement, I've had 16 years in law enforcement, and I know that doing off-duty jobs, there is a course that we take. And how do we know that the course that you took, the Stillman person, that is directly in line of what, you would be held accountable with your security plan? And I don't believe that having somebody just because they are in law enforcement is a way to protect the people here. That is one question. The other question is, after viewing these tapes, after viewing these tapes, sir, what is the main thing that you got out of this tape that you instantaneously thought that you needed to change?
I can answer. This witness has not sworn, so if you don't mind, sir?
I appreciate that.
I mean, I could swear him. I mean, I could swear him. I just want to make sure.
Oh, that's fine. You can ask.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, to hold truth down by the truth? All right, thank you.
What was the question, ma'am?
My question was, when the process was brought to your attention that there were some infractions and that you would be cited, after looking at this tape, for however long you looked at it, what was the first thing that you thought, as a businessman, that you should immediately change that would make a difference in how you handle your business in our city?
First of all, I would definitely change the management. That's one of the reasons I have completely removed everybody who worked there. Given chance, it will be fresh, completely fresh start. It will be changed in every which way that is possible. And the safety will be first. That is the given fact. And I have three girls, and they come to downtown. Obviously, they're of age. So, I deeply care. But a lot of this, what you're saying, I understand it. And my bar has been closed for two and a half months. So, believe me, I have had enough time to think about all this stuff that's been said here. And mistakes were made, but I, we did take steps to correct it. But at the end of the day, you know, like Donovan said, that we, I can tell them, I said, these are the things, the dos and don'ts, but the person don't implement, and that's when I came in.
Yes, sir.
So, I take the blame for it, absolutely. What happened was very regretful, but at the same time, I have taken a lot of measures to correct the situation. And tourists, Savannah residents, everyone, I mean, the safety is first. I think I realized that very much.
Well, thank you for your time and your energy. It is our due diligence to make sure that we take care of citizens, businesses, and how they interact with our community. Thank you for your time, Mr. Julius.
Thank you. All the women, I'm sorry.
Mayor Johnson, may I just clear up with regards to the individuals involved in the shooting? They were not bystanders. All of them came out of Octane. They were not bystanders.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
So noted. All the women, Miller Blakely.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, your name is?
Raj Patel.
Mr. Julius.
Mr. Julius. Okay, he's been in business since 2019, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And he got his first citation in June of 2022?
2024, in June of this year.
2024?
Yes, ma'am.
From June 19th, I mean, from 2019 to June?
To June of this past year was the first time.
Of this past year, okay. And he got that citation when someone called and said that there was underage drinking in this establishment?
All the woman Blakely, actually, his first citation was in 2019. So, that was not his first citation in 2024. With regards to his show cause hearing, yes, but he had citations in 2019.
I think, that's not our understanding. I know that there was, that report we were talking through earlier, that, sorry, this is my feedback.
The first report, my clarification, first report.
There were, the first report that they put together, the first time he saw it, was in preparation for this show cause hearing. The first significant or less incident reported was in 2019, obviously from when it opened. But he was never cited for anything until June of this year. So, that's kind of a big thing he's saying is, look, if there were any issues, I certainly didn't know about it until June of this year.
Okay, so, and someone called and complained on this establishment? I guess that would be a question for Ms. Jones? Someone called and complained on this establishment in June of 2024, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes.
And there were three incidences that happened after those complaints, correct? Of underage drinking?
No, ma'am. There were two incidents. There was August 24th and August 30th. No, ma'am. So, to answer your question, you talked about how in June of this year, they received a call. There were three citations issued for that same occurrence. It was treated-
For the same occurrence?
For the same occurrence in June. That was adjudicated then. Since that time, what we're talking about today, August 24th and August 30th, he received three citations that have yet to be addressed by the court.
Right, and he was advised at two administrative hearings to do, to take measures to make sure that those incidents didn't happen again, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That was one in June, and then the second one was after he was, his license was suspended. So, the first one was in June. The second administrative hearing, he hasn't had opportunity to act on it yet. That's why we're here.
Okay, so, you read where our ordinances say that he had three times to violate, where he would have been fined $500, $700, up to $1,000, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, what, you're telling me that he was not allowed those opportunities?
To this day, so, there's a lot of citations, and they issued multiple citations. So, for instance, August 30th, he received two. First was for the presence of an underage person. The second was for various saying that they didn't follow the security plan. Okay, when he went in June, they treated it as one violation. He was fined $500, the minimum for that. And since then, he has not been to court. So, all we have since that timeframe, regardless of everything we've talked about, is just the three citations related to August 24th and August 30th that we're talking about today. And so, I guess that was our question, was really, are we even at the point yet where there's been four violations to have a show cause hearing? Because he's only been fined the $500. But I think Mayor Johnson kind of answered that at the outset.
I got you. I got you.
Can I add some clarification to that, if it's okay, all the women?
Yes.
So, the penalties that Mr. Julius read out are penalties issued by the Recorder's Court. That is separate and distinct from what y'all are doing here today. On a first violation for a citation in Recorder's Court, you get a $500 fine. Second one, you get $1,000. And if you get to a certain point, then yes, you come to counsel, and counsel makes a decision about your license. But those penalties read by Mr. Julius are different than what counsel is doing here today. I just want to make sure that you don't think that that's your only avenue of penalty today.
So, what is counsel, what is in our ordinance that says counsel can do this, that, or the third? So, hold on a second. Let me finish, please. Thank you.
Again, that would be the question we're going to ask when he gets concluded with that, so.
Right, thank you. Now, I think Officer Wright, Richards?
Richards.
Right, he said that they sent someone in the establishment when they were doing, trying to find out whether or not there was underage drinking going on inside there?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? I guess that was the CI?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just curious. We have confidential informants that are underage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And you don't know whether or not that person was showing a fake ID or the person was ID'd at all?
Those, is that a question for me?
Well, I was asking him about it, but then you can answer as well, if you'd like.
In reference to June 9th, after receiving the complaints about underage drinking there, we did have a CI go in there, and the CI was not carded entering the premise or when the drink was purchased.
Okay. Okay, now, one more thing. You said about the police officers, that you did not have a Savannah Police. At that time, they did not report. My question is, law enforcement agencies, I heard the mayor say that we had to use somebody because we have various law enforcement agencies. So, Mayor Johnson, maybe you know this, do our law enforcement agencies, are they all on the same roster? And the reason I'm asking that is because I know there's other alcohol establishments that request police presentation at their businesses, and sometimes they don't show up. So, is all of our law enforcement officers on the same roster?
No. Essentially, each department has their own rules for authorizing off-duty. Savannah Police Department has specific rules for officers that have to be approved to be able to work off-duty. The establishment has to be vetted. There are certain circumstances in which police cannot work off-duty. You would have to contact that department, and there's usually an off-duty coordinator. Each department kind of does it differently, but they have a list of, you know, who's available. They'll put it out and see if somebody wants to take on that task. Sometimes people are just busy and they can't work it. And so, but again, we have enough agencies here. And I can, you'll see them at the Hyatt, for example. The Hyatt uses Georgia State Patrol, Georgia Department of Public Safety. You'll see them there. That's kind of what they work. And different establishments have different off-duty officers. But the goal, I think for me, without my comments earlier, was about jurisdiction. And if you had to effect an arrest, can you legally effect an arrest? And someone who does not have jurisdiction in Savannah cannot legally effect an arrest in, you know, outside of a sheriff's deputy with statewide jurisdiction.
I got you. Okay. One more question. I think I heard you say that he paid for the service from the police department, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if the police didn't show up, do you get reimbursed? Do you get reimbursed for something? Do you pay this monthly?
Because I usually write them a check right there at the end of the shift.
Okay, got you. Okay. You have to ask her? I don't know. Okay, that's the end of my questions.
I have one clarifying question, Mr. Mayor, for all the women Blakely, just regarding the IDs, they're not, fake IDs, they actually are underage, and they use their legitimate ID and they're checked prior to. Sergeant Richards could testify to what that policy and procedure is before they go into establishment. They check them going in and then check them coming out. So, is there actual identification that they use when going in? Yes, ma'am.
And it's-
Yes. Would you like to hear?
Yes.
Okay, come on. Just so you can-
Times have changed, so.
Will you please advise how the policy is handled?
So, prior to doing an underage buy at a local establishment, everybody has ran through GCIC to verify their age. They're only entered, or they're only given their proper ID, that's their lawful Georgia ID, and they're only provided cash that's provided by us, by the city, for the sole purpose of buying alcohol that night. So, they don't have extra stuff on them. They don't have fake IDs.
Oh, okay. This is considered a bar tavern, not a bar restaurant?
It's just a bar.
Just a bar, okay. All right, thank you.
And just for further clarification, although they might attempt to buy alcohol, they cannot consume, they cannot purchase it or consume it, correct?
That's correct. They do not consume it, and they're accompanied by an officer at the time as well, in plain clothes.
Thank you. Any other questions for counsel?
One more question. Can they enter this establishment under the age of 21? Or they have to be 21 in order to enter the establishment?
They have to be 21.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for counsel? Yes, sir. All the women, Leggett. Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon, Mr. Julius, and also Attorney Cooper. Thank you guys for being here today. Mr. Julius, I have a quick question for you. Could you define for me the quality of life definition?
I'm sorry, you asked me to define the quality of life?
What does the quality of life define? What does that mean to you?
I'm not sure. If you're asking me of my own personal opinion, we're talking about quality of life.
Yeah.
I think it speaks to, I think it varies. I think it's subjective. I think ultimately, what we're talking about is the tangible ability to enjoy the things that come with life, meaning your family, your loved ones, experiences such as those.
Right, so I'm just asking you that because I'm going to give you the definition of it for, just some clarity, is just the standard of health, comfort, and happiness experienced by individuals or a group. And I'm saying that because I represent 27,000 people. I represent from the river to Victory Drive. And 27,000 of those people, plus the individuals who come downtown from various areas of the city, I still represent them. I represent Mr. Patel, because he's a business owner. And before I even get that much into it, I want to offer my condolences to the family of Mr. Manigold, because I represent him, because he came down there doing a job within the district. Anybody that put their foot down there, I represent them. 35 Whittaker Street, Octane Lounge, and they were born in 2019. But as they were born, they had rights and responsibilities that they were supposed to adhere to. And once those rights and opportunities that they were given were violated, I think that what we had to do was, we had to start investigations. I started receiving emails, once I got in the office, about the different things that were happening. The emails were forwarded to different people throughout our organization. But as we went through those different emails, I started having conversations with the Neighborhood Association president, and also spoke with businesses that were also opening up, and they started having issues that were coming from Octane. So, I'm making this declaration to you guys to let you know that the, not only the city had a vested interest in what was going on, it was the Neighborhood Association who also had an interest in it. And if I can, Mr. Mayor, can I ask if there are any adjacent businesses here and represent, being represented?
No, sir.
They can't come?
For what purpose?
To witness.
No, no, sir. This, we, I said at the beginning of the hearing that this is regarding the issue presented by the city.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, also, Mr. Julius, your client had multiple instances and citations about fighting firearms within and also outside of said business. And it also had buying of drugs, shootings, August 24th, a shooting August 30th that got us here right now, and also multiple offenses. Is there anything that you can tell me that would make us not have any concern as to why we shouldn't be here for Mr. Patel?
Yes, sir, and thank you for your question, Councilman Leggett. So, to put it very plainly, some of these incidents that he's learning of just now, mind you, we had a meeting in June. A lot of these firearm and violent incidents weren't raised, to our understanding, at that meeting. It really was focused on underage drinking, the CI that we talked about earlier in June. August 24th and August 30th, there were no CIs. That's why earlier, to Councilman Blakely's question, we didn't, we don't know how these individuals that were underage got into the bar on those days, the citations that brought us here from the 24th and the 30th.
How often is your client in the establishment? So, during the time, so during the time that these instances were happening, these calls of service and everything, you were there?
Not at that moment, no.
And that was the answer to my question. I wanted to also make sure and mention, Mr. Mayor, that it said that he fired the majority of his staff. And I don't want to, and being that he is on record, I want to make sure that he understands that answering this question could be detrimental. Firing everybody that worked in your establishment, do they now, are you still representing them? They work for you? Or do they work for somebody in, that's in your family? Your son has a business. Are they working there, or they continue to work?
They work for somebody else.
They work for somebody else. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that we put that on the record. And also, sir, we wanted to let you know that when we move forward, this is a different counsel. We have so many different alcohol establishments that came under question, and we want to make sure that we held everybody to the same standard. And we also made sure that, we wanted to put it on record that having an alcohol license is a privilege and not a right. But again, I want to make sure that we tell you that by being a representative of the 27,000 people that live in that area, and the quality of life is in question right now, we want to let not only Mr. Patel, but any business know that there is a standard that we hold in each and every one of you, too. So, when we invite family members, and you know, as a Georgia Bulldog fan, I thank you for being here, but we want to make sure that anybody that come and visit Savannah, that there is, and it should never be a question of your safety. And this is why this is something that each and every one of us are going to continue to hold dear, that something like this cannot just be pushed under the rug without some type of consequent attached to it. And this is why we wanted to give you your due, your just due, and allow you to have your day before us. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Thank you very much. Mr. Attorney, all the women, Lenir.
Thank you. So, we're here today because of the August 24th shooting?
August 24th, August 30th.
So, there are two shootings that brought us to here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, underage shooting on the 24th, and a suspension was due to the shooting on the 30th. And the people who were involved in the shootings had frequented your establishment?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the incident on the 24th, would that have brought us to this hearing here today?
More than likely, it was headed there. There was going to be administrative hearing and definitely meeting with Mr. Patel, and then the next incident occurred.
Okay, and in both instances, those people involved had been in the establishment?
That's correct.
Okay. And I didn't plan to ask any questions in hearing what everyone else was asking. I thought I understood.
You're fine.
But, but we had set a precedence with the treehouse, where compared to this situation, we had some people that had frequented this establishment, and they left and were involved in these heinous crimes. And in the treehouse, someone was actually shot inside the establishment, and they continued, they were able to maintain their license. So, if we have already extended ourselves to that extent and to allow that establishment to continue business, but in this case, no, this did not occur inside the establishment, but some people involved had frequented the establishment. And we've been having a lot of conversations about our process and our procedures, and we're talking about this being a privilege and not a right. But we got to be, to-
But we got to be, to weigh these things a little equitably. Someone was shot, was he killed inside the Treehouse? And then in this case, people left and they got involved and the person who was murdered, unfortunately, God rest his soul, had not been in that restaurant. So, we got to consider that. And it's a slippery slope. And that corner I sat there the other evening was out with family members and there's a lot of activity on that corner that will keep you all quite busy. But we still got to keep in mind, we've set a precedence with this council of, with the Treehouse. And I just want us to keep that in mind as we make a decision because it's been so much criminal activity in that area, it's dangerous downtown in that area. And right now, I think everybody, the people living in the district all around Savannah, we're watching that area, nervous about frequenting that area. And somebody is going to have to take account. And unfortunately, look like today, you know, that's what we're thinking about. But we got to think about what happened prior to this and what we have already allowed in the past with the Treehouse. And, you know, we're going to have to make some hard decisions, but I think we got to be careful about how we weigh what has already happened compared to what has happened here now as we go forward with setting regulations about how we are going to handle these type of procedures and these type of incidences. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. It's important to note that the Treehouse was a different administration. This council is not bound by any decision of a former council. Huh? No. Treehouse is 139th administration, this is 140th administration. It's different.
Carol's different.
It's different.
Well, yeah.
But it's different, it's a different, right. Well, I mean, it's still a different council. So, I want to make sure that, more importantly, that a careful consideration of the facts and evidence presented here is considered by council and whatever decision you reach is the decision you reach. Mr. Attorney, I just wanted you to briefly advise counsel about what our options are in this matter.
Yes, sir. You have a spectrum of options here. You can immediately reinstate the alcohol license and he can go back to operating tonight. At the other end of the spectrum, you can permanently revoke his alcohol license and he can never operate again. You also have options within that spectrum as well. You can set a number of months or a specific deadline where he can be reinstated, similar to the Treehouse. And within that spectrum, you can set conditions. You can require him to meet with the ABC team to implement a new security plan. You can require him to implement the security plan that is demanded by the ABC team. You can require that he no longer employ the manager, that he's already terminated. The options are yours. If you have questions about specific terms, I would suggest that you ask both me and Mr. Julius. Mr. Julius may say that he's, his client's perfectly willing to agree to particular terms.
Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, what is the will of this council? The only thing I would suggest is, on our end, and I know the attorney and certainly the city manager, we need to make sure that we're doing consistent enforcement and consistent visiting citywide of our alcohol-serving establishments. Yes, ma'am?
A question for Attorney Bates, how long has it, has his license been revoked?
September, he basically was revoked September 1st, I mean, August 30th, but if you think about it, it's kind of September 1st. So, September, October, he's been a little more than two months so far.
Okay. Is there a motion?
One question, Mayor Johnson. Attorney Lovett, you said that we could either do certain amount of months, that we could revoke them permanently, we could reinstate them, what were the other two?
So, you could also, if you decide it's a certain amount of months, if you say, hey, I believe that he should be suspended for three months, six months, whatever it may be, you can add conditions to the reinstatement, that they meet with ABC, that they establish a security plan, that they buy warrants or whatever it is that you want to see happen there, you can make that a condition of reinstatement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm recommending that he be at least revoked for the remainder of the year. Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and I ask that he be revoked for the remainder of the year in the first quarter and also meet with our ABC staff, meet also with the Neighborhood Association, create a good neighbor agreement, and also show that he has all new employees and he has to either be on site or someone that is on the liquor license be on site to monitor not only the management, but monitor the, everything that's happening within the establishment.
Second?
Second.
There's only one person on the liquor license, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to make sure we're being realistic in what we're requesting.
Who's on his liquor license? Is he on his liquor? Who's on your liquor license?
Mayor Johnson, I just have one question.
One moment.
Yeah, he's on the liquor license.
So, he's the only person on liquor license, so. Yeah, so I want to make sure that we're clear. If he's on the liquor license, then he has to be within the establishment during the work during his hours.
I mean, I think that's unrealistic.
That's why I'm just trying to find out, I'm trying to get some clarity.
I want to make sure we're not saying something, we're not setting him up for failure.
No, that's why I wanted some clarity.
So, I mean, I think it has to be him or a responsible person that we would know.
The manager.
Right. You have a question?
Yes, I want to make clear, you said, Alderman Leggett, the rest of this year, you added some additional time?
The first quarter, the end of the first quarter, that would mean that.
So, you're saying to March?
31st.
Oh.
That's.
Then the first quarter.
That's better than a year.
I mean, till the end of the year.
I was saying first of the year, but.
I'd like to amend my second and say at least until, I agree with what you said. I was under the impression that you were saying until the end of this year, the first of the year.
Quick question, renewals are January, right? Renewals for the regular term, so yeah, it'll be for the remainder of this year.
So, until the renewal period?
Yes.
Right, he would have to renew and then with the conditions. And go through those conditions again?
And the conditions was to meet with the ABC team with the new alcohol, with a new security plan, also have a Neighborhood Association, a good neighbor agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And to, now you already answered the other one, so those are the major two and everything else that Mr. Julius so graciously gave us.
I think there needs to be something about off-duty law enforcement.
Yes.
Authorized off-duty officers. And my other concern, well, there was something about modified office, we could create a probationary period, which I think was something was discussed. And we talked about modified hours during that probationary period. Could someone read that back into the record just so that we are, if that's, all right, with counsel?
I believe we talked about modified hours and, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was weekdays 1:00 a.m. and weekends at midnight.
Yes.
That amenable?
It was midnight. It was midnight on the weekday and then the weekends 1:00 a.m.
Okay.
No, that wasn't the way he read it. He said 1:00 a.m. on the weekdays and 12 o'clock midnight.
Okay, that's what he said, okay.
Well, so we're saying 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday and basically midnight every other day, correct?
Okay.
Correct.
All right.
And then I think the other, was there any other?
I think those were the main, the main ones.
Okay.
And how long is that for?
That was, how, it was six months?
A six-month probationary period.
The other thing is, and this is something, and it might be structural, but that alley is dark and it's too dark. And so, I don't know whether you can speak with your landlord, but I think that lends itself to some of the issues. Not to mention, I've been down there sometimes and it's been just very difficult to see, very difficult for law enforcement to see what's happening in that alley. I think people kind of congregate there. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't want Mr. Patel to think that we're picking on him or his business or anything like that, but moving forward, I wanted to make sure that our city staff and our ABC team understand now how serious this is that we're doing because.
No, we are picking on him. I mean, I think he's put himself in a position.
Not him individually, but all people that have a alcohol license within, and I can tell you by the second district, this is a privilege and not a right, that they have an alcohol license and the things that happen afterwards or within your business establishment, you are responsible for.
Well, it is a privilege, but it's a privilege all across the city.
That's what, I understand it, but what I'm saying as the Alderman for the.
I understand, but a council is really dealing now with this citywide. I think beyond this, which I asked the city manager and attorney to make sure that we are consistently, and this is citywide, you know, our ABC teams, revenue teams, they need to be active. And they need to be active beyond 8 to 5. They need to be in these streets, in these establishments, using CI's, being engaged, being involved. But, you know, sir, unfortunately, you've put yourself in this position by your business practice that you're here today, sorry, but that's what happens when you don't take care of the privilege you've been granted. So, do I have a second? Well, the motion I heard by consensus was revocation for the remainder of 2024, a six-month probationary period, which would include regular engagement, monthly engagement with the alcohol beverage team, the establishment of a good neighbor agreement, modified working out, operating hours, 12 midnight on Sunday through Thursday, 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday, and the use of duly certified police officers that have jurisdiction in this area. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes.
Because of my late arrival and I was not here to hear the evidence presented at the beginning, I'm going to abstain from voting.
Okay, so noted.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Johnson?
Is his initial motion dead because there is no clarification of whether he wants to stand on first quarter or not?
Well, that's why, that's why I read, I said remainder of the year. So, I think he was amenable to it.
Yes, sir, so, but when he files for a new alcohol license, all of that will be negotiated also.
Right, he would renew at the beginning of the year.
Mayor Johnson, also, because he did not have the understanding of how to utilize our law enforcement agencies, I would like for somebody to give him the information and instructions on what it is he needs to do as it relates to our local law enforcement agencies, okay? Thank you.
Okay. I've been properly moved and seconded, sir. Do you hear clearly? Okay, it's on you. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, so ordered. Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen, it is 2:16. Counsel, what is your pleasure? I know you all have gotten. Can we take a 10-minute recess?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can we come back?
With all due respect, I understand, but we also have people here.
Yeah.
I'm saying, all right, we'll take, we'll take a 15-minute break.